This is Peter Helland with the show Israel. And Dr. Michael Jones is with us tonight. As I always try to bring up, Israel for the Christian is referring to Jesus Christ. He's the fulfillment of the law. And sometimes in today's world, people hear the word Israel, they think of the Middle East. 1 Corinthians 10 would say that's Israel after the flesh. But Jesus is the true Israel, the last remnant where the promise is fulfilled. And if you believe in Jesus, then you become the Israel of God. And that's the good news that we're emphasizing. Now, like I've been saying on several shows, we're not going to directly follow that theme tonight because locally, things happen. And last night, or when was that?
Monday night.
Monday night, today's Wednesday. We had the city council meeting. And Mike had contacted the news people that he was going to try to speak to the council. And so for mysterious reasons, a lot of people showed up.
Speak about what? Speak about the mayor's announcement that he was a practicing homosexual that he had made in the South Bend Tribune two weeks before. This is the follow-up on the program that we did immediately after that.
Right. If people don't live here locally, locally, people can't understand because you have, we've been showing our show for several weeks on Channel 99, and now we put it on YouTube. And so people were hearing what you were saying and how you felt about this issue. And so apparently, they were all ready to...
Next step was city council.
Next step was city council. And there's, we don't, we can't connect all the dots on what happened. But that's why we're even having the show tonight, is to kind of like talk this through.
Yeah. The bottom line is that I was encouraged to make a statement, got there, and then simply denied the possibility of making the statement. In what looked like, it was clear that there was something being orchestrated here from behind the scenes, simply by the way things went. We can get into that later. But at this point, I'd just like to take the opportunity to make the statement that I was not allowed to make before city council.
Right. So the people that are watching, especially locally, because this really applies locally, but people that are looking elsewhere can see some big significance.
Yeah. And what I'd like to say here is that this is, this is obviously, the issue is homosexuality, but there's a bigger issue here too. And that's the whole issue of representative government. The big question now is whether we have representative government or not. Or whether it's simply a facade behind which the big money men fill the pockets of politicians and buy their votes and these interesting... And from, I'm the editor of Culture Wars magazine, and I think what we're talking about is cultural warfare here. But anyway, this is, this is what I tried to address, wanted to address in the statement. This is what I was not allowed to address. So thanks to the fact that we have cable access, I will be able to give the statement now.
Right. And let me just say this, is that representative government is a term that probably most people have no clue when they see it and when they don't. And that's, that's part of the problem.
Well, we have the facade of representative government, but with the reality is plutocracy and oligarchy and the big money men from behind the scenes controlling everything. So representative government would be you choose your representative, he votes according to what he thinks you believe, and that's how the laws get made. That's not the way it is. And I'll, I go into that now.
Yes.
Okay. My name is Dr. E. Michael Jones. I'm the editor of Culture Wars magazine. I've been a resident of South Bend for the past 36 years, and I would like 13 minutes of your time to address an issue that gets to the heart of our system of government. On Tuesday, June 16th, Mayor Pete Buttigieg announced in an op-ed piece in the South Bend Tribune that he was a practicing homosexual. One day later, Peter Helland and I did a show on the mayor's announcement on Israel, this local cable access TV program. After seeing this program, the South Bend Leadership Coalition, a local group of black clergymen, met to express their outrage at the mayor's announcement. And at the end of the meeting, asked me to speak in their name at a press conference, which they held at Bethlehem Missionary Baptist Church at 10:00 AM on the morning of Friday, June 26, 2015. Peter was there. I mention this because Jason Critchlow, chairman of the Democratic Party of St. Joseph County, denounced me as a racist on their website less than a week after the press conference. The charge is prima facie preposterous. Anyone who actually saw the press conference on either WNDU or WSBT could see that the same black clergyman who asked me to speak for the South Bend Leadership Coalition were literally standing behind me and the statement I was making. Why then did he make the statement? The chairman of the Democratic Party leveled charges of racism against me and the black minister standing behind me because he wants to distract the voters of St. Joseph County from the real issues which the mayor's coming out statement raised. Those real issues involve, number one, the homosexual hijacking of the civil rights movement. Number two, the destruction of representative government in the city of South Bend and the state of Indiana. And number three, the moral transvaluation of all values that is the enabling device for this takeover. Hollywood and Wall Street believe the truth is the opinion of the powerful. Hollywood and Wall Street have collaborated in redefining the moral law as what they want, not what God wants, or what the majority of the American people who believe in God want. Why do they do this? Because in promoting homosexuality, the minority has discovered a way to impose their will on the majority of the American people. Our only defense against the rule of the rich and powerful minority is the moral law and a government willing to recognize that moral law as the only basis for a just social order. How do Hollywood and Wall Street get around this obstacle? How do they disenfranchise the majority of the American people? The first step involves using the media they control to convince everyone that wrong is right. Once Hollywood and Wall Street convinced the American people that sodomy is right and opposition to sodomy wrong, they have won the culture wars because those who are in error have no rights. We are now witnessing a massive campaign on the national, state, and local level to disenfranchise the majority of the American people by overturning the thousand-year consensus, the 4,000-year consensus of both faith and reason that sodomy is wrong. If the majority is in error when it says that sodomy is wrong, their votes and the votes of the legislators they have chosen to represent them can be disregarded as they were in Indianapolis in March because error has no rights. In order to defend the last vestiges of representative government in America, we need to distinguish between what is truly right and wrong and Hollywood and Wall Street's version of the moral law. Because as one commentator put it, "The philosophy 'error has no rights' is sound when the perceived error that faces discrimination is in fact error. But when error gains popular acceptance, true ideas are condemned in their stead, and truth instead of error ends up having no rights." This is becoming increasingly true concerning issues of marriage. If you would dare uphold Christian beliefs on marriage or other unpopular subjects, be warned, error has no rights, and you are considered to be in error. In an article which appeared in First Things, George Weigel noted that the notion that error has no rights is an idea long associated with the farther reaches of Catholic traditionalism has migrated to the opposite end of the political spectrum where it's become a rallying point for the lifestyle left, who are now using the idea to promote homosexual marriage. The mantra that error has no rights, Weigel continues, will inevitably be used to punish religious bodies that do not recognize any such thing as same-sex marriage. Weigel underestimates his case here. The mantra "error has no rights" is now being used not just to punish religious bodies, but to overturn representative government in the United States of America. Over the past four months, we have seen homosexuality instrumentalized, politicized, and in fact weaponized as part of a campaign to disenfranchise the majority of the American voters on national, state, and local level. This campaign is necessary because wherever the people have spoken, they have declared that marriage can only be between a man and a woman. When 19 states passed referenda affirming this fact, all of those popular initiatives were overturned by the courts. Clearly, a strategy was needed to keep the popular will from being implemented into law. The result was a three-pronged attack against the will of the majority, who felt that the laws of the land should be based on the unshakable foundation of the moral order as established by God. The logic is clear. If you say that sodomy is wrong, you are in error. And if you are in error, Hollywood and Wall Street can ignore your voice and the voice of those you elected to office because error has no rights. On the national level, the Supreme Court passed its Obergefell decision with a one-vote margin, striking down all laws establishing marriages exclusively between a man and a woman. In a dissenting opinion commenting on that decision, Justice Antonin Scalia wrote that the court's decision was, quote, "a threat to American democracy," close quote. The Obergefell ruling Scalia continued, quote, "says that my ruler and the ruler of 320 million Americans coast-to-coast is a majority of the nine lawyers on the Supreme Court," close quote, four of whom, he later remarked, live in New York City. Three months before the Obergefell decision, residents of the state of Indiana learned the same lesson when the air-elected representatives got shoved aside and the Religious Freedom Restoration Act, which they had just passed, got rewritten by a CEO from San Francisco. Not one elected official in the state of Indiana objected to this usurpation of representative government by a cabal of out-of-state CEOs and homosexual activists. Notre Dame professor Patrick DeNin described the CEO homosexual attack on the sovereignty of the state of Indiana and the rights of its people in the following way. Americans of both parties once believed that no center of power in America should become so concentrated that it could force its views on every other citizen. What we saw in Indiana was not just a miscalculation by Republicans. We saw fully unmasked just who runs America and the kind of America that they are bringing more fully into reality every passing day. It will be an America where the powerful will govern completely over the powerless, where the rich dictate terms to the poor, where the strong are unleashed from the old restraints of culture in place, where libertarian indifference, whether in respect to economic inequality or morals, is inscribed into the national fabric, and where the unburdened hedonic human will reigns ascendant. Close quote. Patrick DeNin, Notre Dame University. In between both attacks, the mayor of South Bend announced that he was a homosexual. Shortly after making that announcement, the mayor flew out of town to attend a political rally in Indianapolis. The implication of his actions was that this announcement somehow laid an important issue to rest. We disagreed then, and we disagree now. Far from resolving the issue, the mayor's announcement raised more questions than it answered. His statement of June 16th made it clear that the mayor has deliberately withheld crucial information that the voters of South Bend needed to make an informed choice when they went to the poll four years ago. Had the mayor announced that he was a homosexual when he ran for office the first time, that information could have influenced the outcome of that election, and even more importantly, the passage of the gay rights ordinance after he was elected. Far from laying this issue to rest, the mayor's announcement has created a crisis that goes to the heart of our political system. The people of South Bend need to know whether the people they choose as their elective officials are in fact representing them, or whether they represent outside interest groups or lobbies who are using people like the mayor and the homosexual movement he represents as covert instruments of social control. The Democrats like to portray themselves as the friend of the black man. But after the mayor got elected under false pretenses, the Buttigieg administration engaged in the deliberate marginalization of the black community in favor of other groups' existence we didn't know about until the mayor made his announcement. To give just one example, the local black police chief was replaced by a mercenary from Tajikistan. The black community is still frozen out of government contracts. Are those contracts now being handled by homosexuals? Hand it out to homosexuals. Instead of answering these and other potentially embarrassing questions, the Democrats have played the race card as a way of distracting everyone's attention from the fact that it is they who have declared war on the black community in South Bend by hijacking the rhetoric of the civil rights movement and applying it to sodomy, the sin that cries to heaven for vengeance. Before we can cast an informed vote in the upcoming mayoral election in November, we need to know the full extent of this aversion of representative government. And we can only know the full extent if we get answers to the following questions. In his statement, the mayor announced that he knew he was a homosexual in high school. If that is the case, why did the mayor deliberately withhold this information from the voters during his first campaign for mayor? Was there reference to his homosexuality on the police tapes, which he refused to release to the public? Was this the reason he refused to release those tapes? Was lack of support for the homosexual agenda a factor in the firing of the former police chief? Is homosexuality now a consideration in hiring or in the granting of government contracts? Are other members of the Buttigieg administration homosexuals? If so, would they be willing to share this information with the public and explain whether this affects their ability to function as civil servants or grant government contracts? Is the police chief a homosexual? We now have a new deputy mayor. Is he also a homosexual? Is the city, in short, now being run by the same cabal of moneyed interests and homosexual frontmen that overturned the Religious Freedom Restoration Act in March? Mayor Buttigieg has responded to our press conference by declaring that he has no intention of answering these questions. The chairman of the Democratic Party of St. Joseph County has called us racist for having the temerity to ask those questions. That is why we are turning to the officials we have elected to the city council and asking them to take our part in this dispute. We are not CEOs. We don't have corporate jets. We cannot buy politicians and their votes with large campaign contributions. Now that the executive branch has snubbed our request, we have no place else to turn. We need to know if we in fact have a government which represents us. Given the events of the spring and early summer, the answer to that question is no longer clear. That was the statement I was hoping to give. Obviously, the end of it was directly addressing the council and asking them as our elected representatives to take our part in this dispute. You were there. You know what happened.
Yeah. Now, I was informed that you were going to get 10 minutes. And that's why people thought there was an opportunity here. Can you address that, why you thought you were going to get 10 minutes?
Yeah. First of all, we have to establish the fact that when, first of all, we had this long, I was told, okay, I was told that there wasn't going to be much business here.
Yeah. Because I was told you were probably going to get on around 7:30.
7:30 is what I was told, okay? Not a whole lot to talk about. Well, when we get there, there's a huge crowd there. A huge crowd with all signs saying, "We stand behind our mayor," or something like that. And not only that, the mayor's there. Now, I was told beforehand, the mayor never goes to council meetings.
Well, the last one that we were at, that I was at, they were complaining that the mayor doesn't show.
Yeah. So it's common knowledge the mayor doesn't show. So why is he here? Why is he here tonight? Well, you know, I like to say this isn't about me, but this is about me. It's pretty clear, this is about me. Because word had gotten out that I was going to be speaking. Now, how that word got out, that's another question. Okay? But so the word gets out, I'm going to be speaking. I walk in, there's the mayor. And the mayor, it's just this general chumminess. You were there, you know, it's like, I mean, we're just great people. I mean, if there's one message this council meeting is going to convey, we are a great bunch of people.
It was so chummy that it was like, whoa.
We like this guy, give him an award. We're just a great bunch of people. It's just great to be a citizen of South Bend.
They were into loving each other like you couldn't believe.
It was, it was like sitting in the hot tub. Okay? It was like an emotional hot tub. Okay? And then suddenly, the mayor goes up for the last time, and suddenly, the whole tone changes. And the mayor says, you know, there are some people who want to divide our community. And everybody looks, I wonder who that is? You know, I'm looking around. Who is this guy? And then he said, and then he says, well, we don't allow that to happen. When people try to divide us, we come together as a community. Well, that was reference to me. I'm the only guy. He walks back, I grab his hand to shake his hand, you know, as he's walking past. He then walks out. And at that point, everybody stands up, gives him a standing ovation. Well, something was going on here. I mean, this is not what I expected. First of all, when I see the mayor, I think, great opportunity now. He's going to be here. I'll give my talk. I'll have the questions. He can couple up and answer the questions. Well, guess what? It didn't work that way.
But you were led to believe that this is what it was going to be.
No, I was not led to believe that. I was led to believe that I was going to be able to give a statement.
Right. Right. And that would open the door up.
And that I would have the time to give the statement. I mean, let's be honest here. They have been talking, the two meetings I attended, they talked for hours on how high the grass is allowed to grow in South Bend, Indiana.
And how important it was.
And how important it is that it should not be able to grow only nine inches, but not 12 inches.
And not only that, how great South Bend will be.
How great we will be.
When they really...
When the grass gets mowed.
Right.
You know, I mean, I know this is really important stuff. But, you know, so I finally get my chance. They end their meeting. I walk up to the podium. Privilege of the floor, I gave the beginning, I said, like 13 minutes, exactly what I said at the beginning. And they say, they all shout with one voice, "Motion denied!" You were there. You saw it.
Yeah. Because you had to wait through about three, over three hours to get there.
Now, we just had three hours of grass. You know, talk about grass. And I'm asking for 10 minutes more than the allotted time. Okay. Motion denied!
And they knew that that's why the cameras were there. Fox 28?
They knew, that's why everybody's there.
That's why everybody's there.
Everybody's there.
And they all knew it.
The point of this is, even Pete Buttigieg said this. I mean, when he's up there, the first thing he says when he goes up to the podium for the last time, he says, "I know you're not here to talk, to listen to discussions of zoning ordinances. No, they're here to listen to me. They're here because I'm here. I'm the only reason all these people are standing there with signs."
Well, I hate to sidetrack this, but when I had my case to the Supreme Court for outside the United States, it was front headlines. High court turns down two First Amendment cases. Well, I didn't even get a hearing, but it was still front headlines. You didn't even get a hearing, basically.
No. So what, you, you listened to my talk. The whole point of what I'm trying to say here is that this is a threat to representative government, this whole homosexual movement. And so what do I, what do we realize here? You go to a city council meeting, and the whole representative government is a facade.
Well, the first thing you saw...
It's a total facade.
The first thing you saw, when you got up to speak, exactly at that time, Dr. Furlough, your representative, walks out so he doesn't have to hear a thing you say.
Yeah.
It's like, that was like, what?
So suddenly, where's the chumminess? Wait a minute, I thought we were one big happy family here. I thought we were great, decent people, blah, blah, blah.
When love was flowing like you couldn't believe.
I mean, it was just such a love bombing festival. And then suddenly, the temperature dropped about 40 degrees when I step up to the podium. And Doc Furlough walks out. And at this point, I say, okay, I got three minutes. Can I start the three minutes now? No!
You're already...
No! You've already used up a minute of your time. Okay. Okay. If that's the way you want to be. So I try, obviously, they're trying to throw me off balance here. I try to give my presentation. And as I'm giving this, okay, this is when Furlough walks out. And then they're shouting at me, "30 seconds! 20 seconds!"
Right. So basically...
What a joke! I mean, this is, this is what we call representative government in the city of South Bend.
No, there's definitely a spiritual element because you're basically objecting, you're saying that being black does not affect a person's character. Because that was, that was the reference point in his article. And you're saying, however, being a sodomite does affect your character.
Well, he, the mayor made this preposterous statement in his, in his op-ed piece in the South Bend Tribune. "I want to be judged by the content of my character." Well, wait a minute, buddy. You just announced that you're a sodomite. You announced you're a homosexual. That is your character.
Right.
We are judging you by the content of your character because you said you're a homosexual. If you take it back, now, what I mentioned here, both in this talk and at the press conference, was that this is part of a deliberate hijacking of the civil rights movement as an attempt to marginalize the black community here in town. Because that content of character phrase is taken directly from Martin Luther King. And what Martin Luther King said, to give you the full quote, is, "I'd rather, I want to be judged by the content of my character, not the color of my skin." Well, the color of your skin is not a moral issue, but sodomy is a moral issue. And so this is the total, what are you, what, how stupid do you think we are?
The parallel is, when Paul, St. Paul, I think it was in Acts 24, he goes into the council, it was a big event, you know, they had, the Jews were trying to kill him, the Romans rescue him. I mean, it's just this big event. And so finally, Paul gets to speak. And the lawyer speaks first for the Jews against Paul. And basically, their charge was, he's divisive. He is, he's causing all this. And Paul says, hold it here. I wasn't being divisive at all. I was, this is what I was doing in the temple, this is what I was doing here. These are all lies. And of course, Paul's vindicated because they were lies, but the same charge. Paul's saying was, all I'm saying is that God raises people from the dead. I have a hope in the resurrection. See, by you saying, suggesting that sodomy is wrong...
Look, you have to accept being raised from the dead by the resurrection. You have to accept that on faith. Sodomy is reason. It's both reason and faith collaborating and saying, this is wrong. If this is not wrong, then nothing's wrong. And that's precisely the point that they want to make. Because if nothing's wrong, then they, the CEOs can do whatever, the rich and the powerful can do whatever they want, and you have no way of objecting. And your legislature, you elect those guys in Indianapolis to represent you? Well, if they talk about anything other than how high the grass can grow, they get shoved aside by the CEOs who fly in and rewrite the laws.
Well, the real truth is, the real truth is, if you won't shut up, then they have a right to gulag you outside the city.
Well, that's why I brought up this issue of error has no rights. Because I think this is how, this is where we get to the heart of the matter here. Okay? So it's a multi-step process. But basically, the first step is to overturn, turn the moral law upside down. Now, nobody, nobody in this world, there's a sociological theory that says deviance is constant. What that means is, you have to have something right and wrong. You cannot function in this world unless you understand that this is good and that is not, that is not good. So they're never even able to get away from that. So what they do is what Nietzsche called the transvaluation of all values. So they're going to say, well, what used to be wrong is now right. And now, we're going to be really strict about right and wrong because we're going to say, error has no rights. Now, I can understand that. I can understand that. They trace it back to Pius IX. I can understand what he was saying in the syllabus of errors. I can understand that if you're wrong, you don't have the right to proselytize for your errors in a Christian country. Okay? I can understand that. But what you're saying here is a total transvaluation of values. So now, it's not that error has no rights, it's truth has no rights. And if you say, this is the truth, and it doesn't agree with their notion, you're excommunicated. You're expelled. And we have all these enforcement mechanisms now to keep people docile in this regard. Facebook being one of the primary instruments, especially among the 20-year-olds. So Facebook, if you say, Dr. Jones is, he's a hater, you immediately get 500 likes on your Facebook page. In other words, 500 people patting you on the head and saying, you're a good little girl. You're a good person. We like you. You're a good person. Say something that they don't like you, immediately get hated. This is the way our country is being ruled now. It's by Facebook, it's by these lynch mobs, these Facebook electronic lynch mobs of fandom figures. We don't know who these people are.
No. And I just saw a good article arguing that all kinds of people are manipulating Facebook, either government officials, government...
Of course they are.
And they're subtly, and they can conform you like crazy.
Of course they are. And so this is, this is the mechanism that's, that's put in place now to keep everybody under control.
Right. So if you're, if you live on Facebook, which a lot of people do, you're scared to death to call sodomy a sin.
You'll be unfriended. Can anything worse, can anything worse happen to you?
I've never been unfriended.
Than being unfriended?
Because I've never been friended.
Than being unfriended on Facebook? I mean, what, you know, this is terrible.
My sister unfriended my brother's best friend for taking a stand against that. My sister unfriended my brother's best friend for taking a stand against sodomy. She couldn't handle it.
I have, I have, the, the little girls that used to live down the street from me, you know, are now saying they're ashamed to have lived on Marquette Avenue or something. This is ridiculous. For why, what did I do?
Because you had the gall to say that sodom and gomorrah represents evil in the Bible. And if you're living in sodomy, it still is evil.
It's sin, it's a sin, it's wrong. And we have to maintain this position. Because as soon as you say, well, I don't care what you do in your bedroom, or blah, 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 you know, uh, then they've got you. Then they can say, well, we know, but the, the point here is.
If you blink on that one, if you blink on that one, in a sense, you really are denying Christ.
If you're denying God's law, you're denying God. And so, in a sense, what has happened here is that, uh, the people, uh, the people who have been weakened by moral corruption, they've become confused. And now these people are coming in and using it as a form of control. Now, using this, so they will come down on you like a ton of bricks, and they say basically, error has no rights. And so therefore, the people you elected, we don't care whether you elected them, we don't care whether they, they are in Indianapolis, we don't care where they are, if they don't agree with what, what the orthodoxy on Facebook is, they have no rights. And that's precisely what we saw in March in Indianapolis. The entire legislature of the state of Indiana was shoved aside by CEOs from places like San Francisco, who rewrote our laws. Well, who, who made them king here? The answer is the homosexuals did. Because the homosexual movement is the avant-garde of this, this movement that is determined to substitute the rule of the minority for the rule of the majority. That's what this is about.
They can only win if they got people blinking on the issue. And the reason people blink, because they're not winning the battle for moral purity. That's why, if you're not fighting the battle and winning the battle of sexual purity.
Right.
Then you're gonna be blinking on the issue.
Yeah.
And they know that. And very few Americans are standing.
So, so what you're seeing is the culmination of, uh, one capitulation after the other, beginning with, uh, contraception, 1965, Griswold versus Connecticut overturning the laws on contraception. If there's no intrinsic connection between sexuality and procreation, then why not? And that's, you see, the chickens have come home to roost here with the homosexual movement. And people have been, that's 50 years now, that's exactly 50 years ago. And within this 50 years, the people have been, become so morally compromised, and as a result, so intellectually darkened, they don't even understand what's happening to them.
Right, so if the mayor is wrong in being a sod, in being, living in sodomy, living in, in the sin of sodomy, then they know they're wrong. The supporters are obviously living sexually immoral lives.
Well, what's, taken another way, I think what you see with groups like the Democratic Party is a large amount of guilt management. They know that there's a pool of guilt out there. They themselves, uh, probably are part of it. Uh, so you have to come up with mechanisms that will make you feel good about, make you forget your guilt. And so we have feminism, for example, that absolves women from the guilt they feel because of abortion. And now you have the homosexual movement, which basically absolves everyone from any sexual sin you've ever committed. Because for the most part, you don't commit unnatural sins. So if the unnatural sins are okay, well then by definition, all the natural sins are okay. And I feel better about myself, and we can all be this great, one big happy family at the South Bend City Council meeting, where we all just kind of get chummy with each other and pat each other on the back.
Right, and the worst-case scenario is, this could be a stage of martyrdom, because the only way they're gonna feel a release, of course, if they would come to Christ, His shed blood would release them of the guilt. But they're not, you know, if they don't go there, they may want to shed your blood.
Well, the, you have two options here, uh, from a personal point of view. You have, uh, either repentance when, 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 when you're doing something wrong. Either you conform your desires to the truth, which is repentance, or you conform the truth to your desires, which is known as rationalization. Well, what you're seeing is this country on a massive scale choosing the second option. We're going to make truth conform to our perverted desires. And lots of people, I mean, the majority, let's face it, we're talking about a very small minority here of people. The overwhelming majority are not homosexuals, but because of the sexual revolution, they've been implicated in sexual sin. They have guilt, they have regrets, uh, they have, maybe I, maybe I messed up my life. No, no, wait a minute, it's okay, because I liberated myself. I mean, you read these, you can read articles in the New York Times on a regular basis about this, you know? Like, uh, my husband left me and ran off with another man, and, and he's a homosexual now. But that's okay, because, well, because what? No, no, that's not okay, you just ruined your, not only did he ruin his life, he ruined your life too. And the consequences of thinking that are so horrible that we have to come up with an alternate explanation. And that's where this guilt management comes in.
Well, the other, the other is the, the lady that's running against Mayor Buttigieg in November. If I read the paper right, she said, I believe homosexuality is a sin. But then she says, I have many family and many friends that are gay, and I don't see anything wrong with that, or I don't, I don't judge that.
That sounds like typically Republican logic, she must be a Republican, right?
Well, she's a Republican candidate.
Yeah, well, this is, this is what you can expect from the Republican Party, so. But the fact of the matter is that we do have a choice. Uh, even if she doesn't really understand what's going on, that's okay. We can still choose people who don't understand. Because what this election now has become is a referendum on sodomy.
But it's not gonna be a referendum on sodomy unless some clergy, ideally the bishop, says, if you're voting for somebody that's propagating. Mayor Buttigieg, in the first four years, has made himself somewhat of a hero. Okay, I mean, he's, people really like him, you know, he's Harvard, he's Oxford, he's Rhodes Scholar, he's a warrior in Afghanistan. People have come to really think he's a great guy, doing a good job. And now he's just adding on to his resume.
That's right.
That I also live in the sin of sodomy, I practice sodomy. And normally, my dad and everybody back to Christ would be like fainting, I mean, they'd be like, but this generation will go with it. Nobody before them, I don't think, ever would, and not, not, I don't know when they would have, all the way back to Christ, once, once Christianity started spreading. I don't think any civilization would have ever accepted this. This generation is gonna keep holding up as a, in hero worship of a sorts. I mean, what, what, what do you think on that? That I just said?
I think that what you're saying is that they've never had Facebook before this generation. In other words, the, the, the instruments of political control have never been as all pervasive and as intrusive and as powerful as they are today. That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, because the only way, like, and I talk to my friends in Wisconsin. And he'll stand up on Facebook, like I said, my sister just defriended him, unfriended him. Because he stood his ground on this issue somewhat. Now, he's probably 59, okay? Only the older people still have it in them to.
Peter, Peter, let's look at the big picture here.
Okay.
Do you realize how pathetically powerless we are? Do you realize the pathetic nature of the video that we did? We have, we have a kind of torn curtain behind us. There's, it's not even covering the window, it, it makes Wayne's World look sophisticated by comparison. And that video mobilized the entire city of South Bend, Indiana. It's incredible, I mean, it shows you, it's, first of all, it's a tribute to cable access, that you can do it, still do it. But secondly, let's be, let's be perfectly frank here, it's a tribute to the truth. I mean, we are living through what the, what the psalmist said, the guilty flee where none pursueth. That's clearly what's, the mayor's, the thing, the psychological dynamic that is motivating the mayor. The guilty flee where none pursue, he was insured, he was gonna win. He, there was no, there was no doubt, the first election, he would have lost if he had announced he was a homosexual. So there's a, a lot of duplicity and mendacity there. He, but he was gonna win, he was a shoe-in for this election. And now, this has become an issue. I mean, the, the fact that we got the mayor to show up at a city council meeting is a huge victory. Who would have thought? You could get the mayor to go to a city council meeting, he's an important guy. He, he went to Harvard. Harvard guys don't worry about how long the grass is in South Bend, Indiana. That's for the losers you elect to city council. He's a big guy, he's building a resume. He's got, he's got the best resume since George H.W. Bush, and that was an incredible resume. So the question is, do we have government by resume, or do we have government by the people? Where does it say in our constitution that you better go to Harvard? Where is Harvard mentioned in our constitution? Where is a college education mentioned, mentioned in our constitution? Where is all this credentialism? This credentials mean nothing. It means they are serving other masters. That's the whole point of a Rhodes Scholarship, you know, we've discussed this many times.
Well, you, that's the first thing you mentioned when you, you had your three minutes. You said, my son also went to Harvard, he was number one in his class at St. Joe.
Right.
Mayor Buttigieg and your son, and they both went to Harvard. That's, and their dads are both professors. You are a professor and Mayor Buttigieg's dad. And that's, that's an amazing similarity, and you live right next to each other.
Yeah.
So that.
And they just brush that aside because we don't want to hear it.
And the head of the Democratic Party says that you're not wanted in our community. Well, in the old days, if you were living in sodomy, yeah, the community would say, we don't want you in our community.
Well, the same, you have the same moral prohibitions applied to the exact opposite now. Where if you talk about the truth about sexuality, you're going to be demonized and expelled from the community. So the question is, is that what we want here? Because let's, let's be, let's be perfectly frank here. If you have a Christian imposing the moral order, he's bound by the moral order that he imposes on everyone else. Right, I mean, there's always, you know, people always sin, they always make exceptions, but that's the theoretical framework.
And he loses his, he loses his position if he's a pastor and he commits.
Right, I am bound by the, well, these people are bound by nothing. These people believe in pure Nietzschean will to power, that's all that they believe in. That's what, these are the people that the mayor serves. He does not serve the people of South Bend, Indiana. Before he made this announcement, we were all willing to give him the benefit of the doubt. Now he has removed all doubt from our minds. He serves those people, he does not serve us. He serves the same cabal of CEOs and homosexual activists that overturned our state government in Indianapolis.
And the irony of the city council meeting was, they had, they opened up with a prayer in Jesus' name. You remember that?
Yep.
Okay, and then they had, um, somebody swear allegiance to the constitution, of the United States Constitution and the Indiana Constitution. In the Indiana Constitution, it has the section on public schools. It says, the purpose of public schools, number one, is to encourage by all suitable means, moral improvement. So you have a prayer in Jesus' name, you citing the Indiana Constitution, the purpose of our educational system, public, is, is moral improvement. And they want to praise a, a mayor who says, I'm a, I'm a person who practices the sin of sodomy, sodomy. And they see no contradiction here, they, they're not aware of a problem. Isn't that a phony Christianity? Isn't that a phony allegiance to the, in the Indiana Constitution? What would you call it?
Blindness. And blindness is gonna lead to tyranny, there's absolutely no question.
Tyranny against the truth is, but it looks.
Well, that's tyranny, what is tyranny? It's basically, uh, will being imposed on other people with no regard to the moral law. So the constitution, uh, the founding fathers came up with all sorts of mechanisms, they thought, that would prevent this type of tyranny. But the fundamental bottom line is what John Adams said. We have no constitution that functions in the absence of a moral people. Moral, morality is defined as traditionally understood. There's no definition of morality that says that sodomy is not a sin. Doesn't exist. By definition, because morality is reason, and both faith and reason, you can look at this and you can say, look, this doesn't make any sense according to the plan of God's sexuality. It is a total violation of that plan, and it's a total affront to God and, and to human reason.
Well, it's, it's interesting that the very time, it's just an amazing thing, that the Supreme Court now legalized a same-sex marriage. At that very moment, almost, the Confederate flag has to come down. And you go, well, hold it here. Besides all the rhetoric about what the Confederate is, and what people may, in the South may, may want to believe it is, when the, the South succeeded, the first thing they did, they put God, they created the constitution, which is almost the same as ours, but they put God in it. And they were trying to reverse the John Lockian notion that all authority comes from the consent of the governed. They were trying to say, hold it here, authority does come from God. But the North won the war, and it became a radical notion that authority comes from the consent of the governed, and God is not, is, is not in the picture. And they argued the same-sex marriage off the.
But we're not, Peter, we're, we're way beyond even that. What we're saying here is, they don't even believe that authority comes from the consent of the governed. They're not even going to admit that. They are going to say basically, that the, the, the majority rule is wrong. What we have now, from now on, is minority rule, and homosexual activism is the instrument whereby they impose minority rule on the rest of the country. That is the message I was trying to give before city council, that's the message that we need to talk about. Because this is a crisis, this is a political crisis, because it goes to the heart. I mean, okay, no, no government, no system of government is perfect. There's always going to be problems with every form of government, that's why the church really doesn't get into business of endorsing it. But this is what we have. This is what we've been told as our system, this is what functions every way. And what these people have found is a way to subvert that system without letting on that it's being subverted. They're fooling the great majority of the American people. And the reason they can do that is because they control the instruments of communication, which is what we see here in, in, in our city.
Right, and that, and that's where the real dilemma is, is that we do have Channel 99. So, so they don't control that, and anybody that has Comcast or AT&amp;T can, can watch this. But in this situation, we're having to confront our, our mayor, who, who the scripture warns us to speak respectfully of, because of his position. But he's the one that really has the ultimate control on whether Channel 99 is funded. Well, we'd be tempted here to say, hold it here, be careful about calling sodomy, sodomy a sin.
Look, Peter, if, if he's gonna defund us because, uh, we can't say this, then let him defund it. It's worthless, if you have to censor yourself and not say what's important, it's completely worthless. That goes for not only cable access TV, it goes as well for the system of government. It's a facade, it's a worthless paper facade that does not correspond either to the will of the people or to the constitutional principles. And it's not just me saying that, you had four justices on the Supreme Court saying the same thing. So because one of those guys went over to the other side, suddenly sodomy's okay. Well, no, I'm sorry, but that doesn't work that way. I'm sorry, it doesn't work that way.
But you're, what's your explanation for the silence of the people? I mean, we're speaking out, you would think we'd have a whole bunch of people that would be outraged, or how would.
Well, that, first of all, there are people who come up to me all the time and call me up on the phone and say, I'm glad you're saying what you're saying. So there are lots of people out there who do feel the way we do, but are intimidated. Why are they intimidated? Because they won't be liked on Facebook, they'll be unfriended. Because there are all of these mechanisms of social control out there that keep people cowed and fearful. And they're all masquerading as means of communication. So that's, that's the main reason. But the, the point is, I look, I don't care, I, I, whether, whether there's 50 people out there, or 50,000 people out there, or 500,000 people out there who agree with me, nothing's gonna change the fact that it's wrong. It's, it's not something that's subject to a majority vote, I believe in majority rule. When it comes to certain issues, I don't believe that majority rule can overturn God's law though. And I think that majority rule only functions if it's based on the reality of the moral, moral law, and that's the basis for the social order.
Going by, going back to why people are afraid to speak up. When we had the show on Candida Moss, arguing that there, there really was no such thing as martyrdom, because it was all, it was other reasons than the truth. But the truth is, if you're a Christian, you're called, at least, we were raised in the Catholic faith, the churches were named after somebody that was martyred, because you understood, that's what happens. When you speak the truth in a wicked culture, they're gonna try to silence you, and if they can't silence you, they're gonna kill you. That used to be just a quick understanding of all Christians. That used to be just a quick understanding of all Christians.
Yep.
Well, we've lost that. And with Candida Moss writing the book, she's trying to remove it even further.
Yeah. Well, what you see here, of course, is the role that Notre Dame has played in the moral corruption of the entire area. Beginning with Father Hesburgh's collaboration with the Rockefellers, his attempt to overturn the church's teaching on birth control. That's what was happening in 1965. The church has a leading role, even whether they know it or not, they have a leading role in society in preserving the moral order. And Father Hesburgh deliberately worked for money to overturn the moral order.
And you're not the only one saying that. Did Charlie Rice say that?
Oh, look, it's out now. I was one of the first people to say it, but I went to the archives. I've done the research. It's in a number of my books. Go to culturewars.com. You can read the books, either Libido Dominandi or John Cardinal Kroll and the Cultural Revolution. I've said in a number of books, did the research. But that was the beginning of it. Okay? So you're seeing that the role-- first, we had the subversion of an institution like Notre Dame.
Which has the image of being one of the most important--
And so, they gave the aura of the Catholic Church to something that was not Catholic. And now, you know, if you-- Peter, if you started a cab company and you called it Golden Dome Cabs or Fighting Irish Cabs,